About two years ago, and it's purely supported by 100% by volunteers. So our goal is to serve the Chinese-American families in the city of Edina. And since it's a start, the ECA has focused a very big portion of these four efforts to promote better education in our community. This would be that reflects our deep cultural values. So it's not very surprising that actually about four years ago, we started our first school board candidate forum. So this is our first one now. And we do that is to provide a platform to really facilitate direct communication between the candidates and our community members. And this year, we're particularly lucky, also for having Minnesota International Chinese School as the co-host. And the Chinese School is also Edina-based, non-profit organization. And as many here know, has a very successful Saturday School environment here right now. So the school enrolls over 300 students and connects more than 2,000 families from Edina and also neighboring cities. It offers many levels of Chinese language and culture classes and also many actually interesting programs beyond that. So kudos to Principal Nanayiso, she's sitting here, and all the school teachers and volunteers for making this a great addition to our Edina Public School system. And of course, many thanks for your help to actually find this place so we can make this forum possible. And today's forum will be moderated by two longtime Edina residents, Dr. Bo Yang Hong and Dr. Wei Hong Chen. Dr. Hong got his PhD from University of Minnesota. He's currently an junior leader at Adam Donelson. Two of his three children graduated from Edina High School. And Dr. Chen, right now, has a seventh grader at Edina Middle School. She works for Wells Babel as a VP Quantitative Analytics Specialist. And she's also an active CFA chartered holder. So without further ado, I now pass the mic to Dr. Hong and Dr. Chen. Thanks.
Hi, good morning, and welcome. If possible, please sign into your phone so that it's not distracting the meeting. And today, we are fortunate enough to have four candidates to attend our forum face-to-face. We really appreciate that. And two other candidates also provide their statement and video to support this event. And the four candidates are Erica Allenberg and Michael Bergman and Owen Michelson and Nicole Snell. Please.
Do you mind if I sit down and we're talking? You're more comfortable. I'm pretty excited about today's agenda, which we'll get into in a second, please. But before we introduce the agenda, here are the rules and format in place today. Everyone present in this building must wear a face mask covering their nose and mouth. Candidates may remove their masks when speaking during the forum if you feel more comfortable. Candidates will remain seated throughout the entire forum. Speaking order was randomly assigned by Python Gen Random Generator, so we'll rotate with each question. As you can see from the agenda, we'll start with opening statement. Then each of the candidates will answer three questions prepared in advance and probably eight questions for the audience. Finally, they will make a closing statement. As far as timing is concerned, each candidate will speak less and less for each round, from two minutes for the opening statement to one minute at the end for the closing statement. Minnesota International Chinese School volunteers, two of them sitting in front, will time each candidate and indicate to candidates when they have 30 seconds remaining with a yellow flag and when they must stop with a red flag. Questions have been submitted to Edina Chinese Association and Minnesota International Chinese School by Google Form in advance of this forum, and the audience must also may also submit questions during the forum. The questions must be in writing and handed to volunteers who were wearing orange. And the moderators will ask questions. ECA MICs determine which question will be asked. This forum is being recorded. Hopefully, these were generally informative and interesting for them tonight, today.
Now let's begin with the openly announced introduction. Erica, start, please.
This is, oh, it is on, okay. Thank you. Ni hao wu xiao, Erica Allenberg. Wu ni er xi zong hu ren. My daughter's learning Chinese at Valhalla Middle School, so she taught me that. Thank you to the Edina Chinese Association and Minnesota International Chinese School for hosting this forum. I've been a resident of Edina for 18 years and consider it my home. I have two children still in the Edina School System, a daughter at Valhalla Middle School, the one that probably I embarrassed right now, and a son at Edina High School. I also have a stepson who graduated in 2017 and is now in the Air Force. I'm the current Chair of the Edina School Board and am running for reelection. I'm running for reelection, not because being on the school board right now is easy, but because it is hard. It is hard and important work that needs diligent, experienced, forward-thinking leaders who can not only navigate us through the current challenges of the COVID pandemic, but also keep our focus where it needs to be, the academic and social-emotional needs of all our students and the strategic governance of our district. My first priority as an Edina School Board member now, and if re-elected, is the continuation of the oversight of the health and safety of our students and staff through the continuing COVID pandemic while not losing sight of academic progress and mental health. We have to be both nimble as a system to respond to changing conditions and data from a health and safety perspective, but also keep stability and consistency in our system in order to accomplish those short- and long-term goals that our students sector. We have important goals to accomplish this year, such as assessing the educational impact of the shifting learning models and a continuation of the measurement of social and emotional health of our students. In effectively managing the pandemic, academic and mental health of our students, while also implementing our strategic plan initiatives, I can prioritize the immediate short- and long-term goals necessary for successful students at schools. This is how we provide the academic excellence we expect as parents. Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Michael Bergman. I am also a proud resident of Edina. Shockingly, it's not going on our 20 years. My wife and I first moved here from Amsterdam, when she moved here from Carke for Carkeville. And we have no family here in Minnesota, but we now feel very connected to this community after 20 years. I have a fifth grader at Normandale and I have a seventh grader, he was actually outside the district at Groze Academy. I have been a very, very active member in the community in terms of giving back through my role as Heritage Preservation Commission for the city of Edina for the last eight years. I was six years as the Chair, so understanding how civic governance works is something in my wheelhouse. I'm also a business leader. I've been the CEO of several companies over the last several years, with a lot of dynamic elements related to healthcare, sales, engagement, and customer management. The key things in my background are, I've been in the room, I've set up the board, I understand how to look at the diverse and challenging issues that we might face as a community and as an organization, and how do we actually engage with our stakeholders to ensure that we are listening, understanding, and acknowledging what their concerns are? And then how do we find agreement on how we can move forward? Ultimately, my vision for public education, which I deeply about, that I care deeply about, is I want to ensure growth for each and every student. My vision is to ensure that Edina is the gold standard in public education. This means every student gets what they need to learn and grow. Those aren't just words, you need to be able to figure out how to put those into actions. Bottom line, I'm committed to supporting each and every student to achieve their growth, wherever their starting point is, and ensure the resources are aligned accordingly. I'm excited to be here today with all of you and talk about why I'm running and hopefully earn your support. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Owen Michelson, and I love coming to the Chinese Candidate Forum. I lived for nine years in the International House near the University of Minnesota. For nine years, I had Chinese roommates from Singapore, from Hong Kong, from Taiwan, and of course, the PRC. And I got to hear so many tales of life in China. I love Chinese cooking. I became, I love jiaozi. It's just so fun for me to live with Chinese. I brought them out to my parents' house for Thanksgiving. And I have been so impressed with the modest, hard-working culture of the Chinese. And one thing became very apparent to me four years ago during this forum, is that many of you are recent immigrants. And it occurred to me four years ago during this forum that I am of recent immigrant stock. My four grandparents all spoke Norwegian as their first language. They came to the United States because they wanted to have academic achievement, they wanted to improve their lives, and they believed in the possibility of the American dream. I saw that with my Chinese friends I lived with, I've seen that with the Chinese I've gotten to know in Edina, that what you want, what I want, are very much the same. You want the most outstanding academic program we possibly can get for your children, for yourselves too. And this building is a testament to that on Saturday mornings, as it comes alive with the Chinese School. So I want to commit our district to being the most academically focused school we possibly can be. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Nicole Schnell, and I'm running as an independent candidate for the Edina Public School Board. Thank you for hosting us this morning. I'm an avid learner. I grew up in Edina, so my fellow running mates here gave me the green microphone. Thank you for that. I went to the University of Iowa, where I studied Journalism and Mass Communications and received a second degree in Business Marketing. I then worked for a couple of years and went on to Northwestern University in Illinois, received a master's in Integrated Marketing, and most recently completed an Automation, AI, and Analytics Certificate in Digital Marketing from Northwestern. For the past 15 years, I have spent my days and nights working in the world of nonprofits where money is tight and prioritization is critical to accomplish mission. I have a heart for learning. My husband Bob and I have three children that were all raised in the Edina Public School System. We recently sent the first one off to Purdue, where she is studying Biomedical Engineering. I'm fortunate to have time to give back to our community, and if elected, will invest the time in asking questions, partnering with our community, and working to improve our schools. Curriculum is my top priority for the school board.
Thank you very much for the wonderful introduction. Now let's spend some time to look at the statement from Dan and Karen, and maybe some video too.
My name is Karen Gable, and I'm excited to be running for school board. I'm sorry that I cannot be with you today for this jointly hosted forum. I want to thank the Minnesota International Chinese School and the Edina Chinese Association for hosting the opportunity to get to know the school board candidates. I also want to thank your organizations for what you have done for our Edina communities and schools, particularly over the last year and a half. From procuring PPP for medical professionals in our area police and fire departments, as well as masks, hand sanitizers, and other needed supplies for the larger community, your organizations heeded the call of service to our community in a time of great need. As co-chair of the Edina Education Fund, I saw firsthand how your organizations also stepped up to help us raise tens of thousands of dollars for the meal fund COVID-19 response so that we could help make sure that students and families stayed fed during the time when kids were not in school. Your organizations are shining examples of how groups of committed people can come together even in times of personal great need and be part of a positive solution and something bigger than ourselves as individuals. For the past decade, I've been a champion of Edina Public Schools through my words and actions. From being the PTO president at the Early Learning Center and Highlands Elementary, to co-chairing the past two school referendums, to my current position as co-chair of the Edina Education Fund. That coupled with the fact that for over the past 20 years, I have been an educator at the elementary, middle, and now post-secondary level. I'm excited for the next chapter of Edina Public Schools. We have a strong leader in our new superintendent, we have an ambitious and innovative strategic plan, and we have good things happening every day in Edina Public Schools. I believe my experience and my skills make me ready to join the board and help make sure that Edina Public Schools is elevating our work, staying focused on the areas where we have opportunities for improvement, and leading the way in making sure each of our students is ready for the global world of tomorrow. I encourage you to check out my website at www.electgabler.com to learn more about me or reach out to me via email at karen@electgabler.com with any questions. Thank you again for this opportunity, and I hope to earn your vote on or before November 2nd.
Now, next up is the question. And for the candidates, please limit your answer to 15 minutes. And also the question, I think the random generator sequence, maybe go to that question, please. One and a half minute, yeah. So. So the question is, in the past several years, there were many committee debates about Edina Public Schools ranking in the state and in the nation. Do you agree that EPS academic ranking is going the wrong direction? Please provide quantified reasoning when you answer the question. If your answer is yes, what will be your top policies to recover the EPS status? If no, what is your plan to maintain the EPS status? And the answer order is Nicole, Erica, Michael, and Owen.
I'm sure this won't surprise you, given my background in data and analytics, but yes, I do believe we're going the wrong direction. I've spent quite a deal of time on spreadsheets and looking at longitudinal studies, not just marketing studies. I believe we've switched as a community from promoting US World and News Resorts, where we are now number nine, to niche, which has three different types that we can go by. I don't believe you can change this measurement stick. I do believe in multivariate analysis, and I do know that test scores are singular, one aspect, but they are one aspect. Our reading scores, our third graders, 30% are not reading at grade level. Our math scores, notice some indicating lagging as well. And then most recently, our fast bridge assessments of what's happened over the last year with pandemic were disappointing. My top policy to focus on is unintended and intended consequences of our actions. For example, Policy 601, there were some changes that moved to accelerate, to remove accelerating pathways, and I believe we have to continue to ask the question of the community, are we meeting your needs? People leave for one of three reasons: learning needs aren't being met, the environment is not safe, or a physical job or other reasons.
Erica, please.
So the reality is, there are certain places our school district is the best in the state, and certain places I think we can improve performance. On the positive side, since 2016, Edina has had the highest ACT scores of any public school district in the state. We've expanded our talent development and academic acceleration offerings in the last four years to now start in kindergarten and now have compacted science at the middle school. We also have best-in-class music, theater, art, robotics, debate, model UN, and other programs that would not be possible without having an outstanding academic foundation. If you analyze our math scores, which measure student growth, our highest-level learners grow at the most in our district. When analyzing our MCA scores, there are a lot of factors to consider. Many more students are opting out, and these are also our highest-performing students. So I have a detailed analysis of our math scores I can provide for you guys afterwards. But in 2021, despite this, the Edina School District had the second-highest math and reading scores of the 47 area metro school districts, also the second-highest third-grade reading scores. In eight of the last 11 years of Edina, Oro, Minnetoka, and Wayzetta, we have the largest percentages of students attending colleges and the largest number of students going to Ivy League schools. Some places I would like to see improvement: literacy and writing, pre-K through 12, additional language arts pathways at our high school, development of more STEAM and technology opportunities K through 12, development of more internship and externship opportunities for high school students. Thank you.
I think as a trained economist, the answer always is it depends on what frame of reference you're at. Rankings in and of themselves depend on who you're talking to. Maybe this will be better. Looks at where we look at from a consistency standpoint and where we're headed. In my opinion, I think we do have several programs that are quite good. We're ranked high as a top public high school in the state of Minnesota. I believe that we do have high rankings overall for the services that we provide. However, there are many areas where I think that we can continue to improve, not just at the rigor and the curriculum level for our gifted and talented and our highest learners, but also for the other students in our programs that need additional resources for them to be able to go to their potential. My focus, as I said earlier, is ensuring growth for each and every student. We have to be able to understand that comprehensive literacy, which is one of the key strategic elements in our strategic plan that we're executing on now, is the cornerstone for our ability to achieve, not just in the early years, but certainly in the latter years that we had. So from my standpoint, I think that we have some good things going on. There's definitely areas of improvement that we need to look at. As a school board member, I will look to engage with the community to make sure that we keep our eye on the ball and see the areas that we need to focus on. Thank you.
Pointing mechanics, what do the flags represent?
The yellow means 30 seconds, one 30-second warning, then which is the timer's up.
Okay, good, thank you. I believe, yes, Edina has seen a flagging in the scores in academic achievement. We, as Nicole just mentioned, were at ninth, we bounced around to 11th, 10th. Edina always was number one or number two. I am the only native Minnesotan on the board. I've seen this. This is not the same community I moved into 22 years ago, and I would like to get it back toward that academic focus. Our MCA's last year were disastrous. We dropped 8.1% in math, 8.9% in science, and 2.3 in literacy. Yes, the ACT scores do well in Edina, however, I've said for a long time that that's as much a measure of the affluence of the community that can pay for coaching with our students. And a lot of parents will do that here in Edina. So that's, to me, it's a measure of the affluence. What we can do is to recommit ourselves to academic excellence. We are really focused on this concept of equity. And to me, I think it's interesting the term equity is used, not equality. Equity ties us towards equality of outcomes, and I don't like that. I think we ought to give equal opportunity, but let ambitious kids just rise to the level of their ambition. And to focus our professional development on academics, we're focusing in a lot on ideology. Get the teachers focusing on skill development for their kids. And strengthen our gifted and talented programs. North of us in St. Louis Park, they basically dismantled their program. We can't do that here in Edina.
Thank you. The next question, we'll go to Erica first. The question is about Asian hate. With COVID-19 spreading in the world since early 2020, there has been very concerning uptrend of Asian hate crimes and incidents in the nation and in the state. Are you aware of such incidents in Edina Public Schools? Do you see any improvements needed in the EPS system to help address this issue and ease potential concerns of Asian-American students and large minority groups? What specific actions will you push EPS to start?
Well, I first want to state emphatically that there's no place for hate in any forms towards Asians or any other minority groups here in Edina Public Schools, in our community or in any other communities. I also want to recognize that the Asian and Asian-American experience is not monolithic. Unfortunately, I have heard of a few incidents here in Edina Public Schools. I do have some ideas for improvement and action items, but I would suggest that it would be better to hear from our Asian students, families, and educators themselves about some suggestions they have for improvement. So the first item I would suggest is a focused group and opportunity to have dialogue on this topic, to collectively come up with some ideas together. Some additional ideas that I could see supporting, if they are supported by our Asian families and other families, are having conversation and education with all students about hate speech, the impact of hate speech on students and the broader community, create supportive environments for Asian and Asian-American students to facilitate dialogue and support if they are interested, including making counselors available to students when and if issues of hate speech or violence occur. I also want to recognize that Asian and Asian-American experiences often get left out of conversations about equity, and I think that needs to change. I also think it's imperative that as a leader in our school system, we live the ideals we want our students and broader community to embrace. As leaders, we need to embrace and value the perspectives of all, proactively learn about other cultures, challenge our own thinking, and elevate these conversations, not just within our schools and communities, but within our homes, which is something I've committed to. Thank you.
Michael?
First and foremost, it's unconscionable that there's hate against any population, but specifically Asian-Americans here in the United States, given everything that's happened with the pandemic. That is unbelievable that it's actually happening, and I holistically abhor that type of behavior. And first of all, not only does it not belong in our nation, but it doesn't belong in our community either. I am personally not aware of incidences in the school district, as I do not have kids who are in the high school or in other, or in the middle schools at this time. I'm not aware of anything that's happening in the elementary levels. That does not mean that it doesn't exist. And just because of who I am doesn't mean that my narrative on what that is, is valid. So if that's happening, I apologize that that's happening in our community, and what can we do about that? First and foremost, when we see it, we address it immediately. When someone says something inappropriate, you don't just go by and like, well, I don't want to deal with that. You stop it right there in its tracks and address it. Everybody needs to do that. Not just board members, not just community leaders, everybody. I would want my fifth grader at Normandale to do that if she saw that happening on the playground or in the classroom. We have to set a standard for understanding and recognizing. We have to set a standard for understanding and recognizing that our experience might not be the same as somebody else's. It's on us to no longer be ignorant about that. We need to move away from being indifferent about that and being actually able to engage with that appropriately. Lastly, is that, well, I don't know the exact solutions for that today. I just know as a leader, that's how you need to approach it in order to make change. Thank you.
I have not heard of any incidences in Edina. My Chinese roommates would, on the rare day, tell me of an instance, and so I know that it does happen here in Minnesota. I presume it happens in Edina, and it's tragic when it does. I think that we are moving in the wrong direction as a society and in Edina when we focus on diversity, inclusion, and equity. Because in the case of diversity, diversity has us look at our race first or humanity second. We are all brothers and sisters of humanity together, and we should look at each other's humanity first or race second. Diversity, secondly, is constantly focusing on what's different among us, not what unites us. Our common humanity is not stressed, thus, we're focusing on what separates us. Inclusion brings people together at the exclusion of merit. It says, "Just bring people in regardless of what they've achieved." I think that's wrong. Equity focuses, as I've said earlier, on equality of outcomes, not opportunities. I think that that's not a good thing. And this actually comes back to unfortunately punish the Asian community because, as you all well know better than I do, that the Ivy League schools, for instance, are discriminating against Asians, and this has gone to Supreme Court. And what has Harvard said, "Asians don't have the proper personality." Come on, no. If Asians have done well on the standardized tests, they ought to be rewarded with admissions to any school based off of the admissions, admission standards.
Nicole?
So I am not in touch with individual instances of hate at school, but I do know the culture to be in need of thorough improvement for Asian-American students and large minority groups. In my nonprofit work, I have had more direct exposure to the problems hate creates in our world and specifically to the reality of fear that many of our Asian brothers and sisters face. I think it's important to create a welcoming community, and it surprised me to hear that it was happening in our community. My kids went to Cornelia, and I applaud the way the school and staff members inspire and nurture all learners in exploring cultures. Also, our school staff and learners are committed to devoting to various community involvement opportunities in different occasions. Some of the ideas that I have include policies where teachers are representative of our student population and global cultures. We have a duty to support every student. This is also a teachable moment for many of us, where we need to ask ourselves what's going on in the society where a group of people are being targeted. Districts can tend to be reactive to traumatic events, but some are taking steps to ensure that their support doesn't go away when the news media moves on. We might learn about the Opium Wars, but not about how they impacted the influx of Asians to the West Coast or the influx of Korean Americans during the Korean War, for example. I support cultural diversity, I support continuing the conversation.
Thank you. I just want to point out that there's an Asian honor in Edina. Principal Madalita Jo won this year's Christian Adults Women in Leadership Award by the Rotary Club of Edina. Each year, they give this award only one woman for their strenuous community service. Let's all give us a big round to our Principal Madalita Jo.
Hi, this is a pointed question, and the answering order is Erica, Michael, Owen, and then Nicole. Our student population from Edina Community has dropped by 100 of the students, which is backfilled by open enrollment. Concerns were yet met with answers such as low birth rate, where most of students left for private school. Is this a concern, and is it a priority to you to find out why this is happening and how we can keep Edina children in Edina schools?
So this is a very important issue to me, and my goal is that Edina is the district of choice for residents, period. Obviously, we have some work to do in this area. I do think that we should absolutely be serving to find out why people are leaving. What we found in the past when we have been serving is that there's a variety of reasons. It's a very personal choice when people are going, and so sometimes we have a hard time getting enough data to have statistically valid answers, to give us enough information to know what shift do we need to do. But I do think our strategic plan is going to help. I think we've lost a lot of people due to our lag in answering the issues with literacy. I believe that we lose students to class size, which is something that is difficult for us to control from a budgetary perspective. But what can we do about this? I think we need to do a better job telling the community what we're good at, fighting some of the misinformation out there. Sorry about the time, thank you.
Yes, this is definitely a key issue, being that I'm one of the residents of Edina that has a child in the district and one that's not. I didn't leave the Edina School District for my child because I was mad or I was frustrated or that I thought the Edina Public Schools was not interested in what my child needed for his particular concerns. It just is a capacity issue. There was a capacity issue in Edina Schools to address his issue. Groves ended up being the right solution for him, and we were fortunate enough that we had the capacity, in my household, to do that. Not everybody has that capacity to make that happen. So I'm concerned that we have choices that are sometimes made, not because of ideology, not because of some other kind of reason. There are legitimate reasons why someone might need to look at other resources that are best for their student. We need to make sure that the capacity for Edina Public Schools is there that we can take care of the majority of our residents and our students' needs based on the limited resources that we then have. It is a huge issue. We are not doing an effective job of understanding why people are leaving the district. We need to understand that better so we can come up with, in our strategic plan and our execution, what are the best solutions that we can do to address that. Thank you.
This is something I've thought about quite a bit. There are essentially four reasons why students are leaving the district. First is, and I've met people from all of these groups, advanced learning. They're finding that they can get better advanced learning in other districts. Second is literacy, just like Michael's saying. People are going to Groves Academy. Third, political ideology. People believe that their children are being taught values that are not their own values. Distance learning. We had a lot of students leave because of distance learning because our students were not face-to-face as much as other schools permitted. I would like to do very thorough exit surveys. We've talked about it, and we've done it to some extent, but we're not fastidious about it. We need to absolutely make sure we track that and get that with every individual that leaves. Sometimes it's hard to find out when the person's leaving, and one of the best triggers for that is when a transcript request comes into the central office. So I think we need to build in some mechanisms like this. And I think, this is my overarching theme, that we all do ourselves a tremendous favor in this regard and in many if we return to an absolute academic focus.
We have studied this a lot as a school district. In fact, we've paid outside consultants to come in and kind of look at it, and I would echo what everyone has said in terms of what we already know. My concern on just doing exit surveys is you fail to look at your current population and what they like about Edina Public Schools. So I think it is as important to know where we are meeting people's needs as it is to know why people are leaving. And so that is one thing I'd like to see us really get deliberate about and understand more fully, to just assess the culture and climate. And for school choice, I want to make sure Edina Public Schools is an equitable choice for all of our families in the district.
All right, the next question has been collected from the audience in presence. So the question will go to Erica first. Could each of you please state what are the major issues and challenges EPS facing? Why is a root cause for these issues and challenge, and how to deal with them? One minute, yeah.
So I think one of the major challenges affecting our district is we are seeing more and more challenging students entering our district from a learning perspective, a mental health perspective, and we have fewer and fewer resources to deal with that. And so I think we're not exactly sure why. We don't know if it's because of technology or what is going on. But if you ask any of our kindergarten or early childhood teachers, they would say they're seeing a lot more challenges. And it takes large budgetary resources to try to combat that, which we don't have. And so I think that's one of the biggest challenges we have is it boils down to meeting the needs of all of our students with the budgetary resources that we have is a big challenge, so.
Michael?
I always look at things as we have issues and challenges, we also have opportunities. So I think we have opportunities to do better at growing each and every student. I think that having the resources in the right place at the right time is one of the biggest challenges that we have, so I agree with that. How can we address this? We have to be very diligent and very specific as to how are we doing today? Where are we being adequate? Where are we optimized? And where are we inadequate? I guarantee you, we have all three of those in our system. Where we're inadequate, we need to focus on how can we deliver the right resources at the right time in order to bring those up to standard, and then while at the same time figuring out how to maintain the levels that we have right there. That's the job, that's the challenge, that's the issue. How we do that is basically understanding what are the key values that we're delivering through that, and then how do we work hard to find solutions and innovative approaches to maintain where we have good things, and how do we bring up the parts that are then there? Thank you.
Owen?
We have a number of major challenges, and so as not to repeat myself, I want to focus on something that is a big challenge, and I think we've been answering the challenge, and that is literacy. Nicole mentioned this last year, 30% of our third graders were not at reading level. Third-grade literacy is very significant because up until third grade, kids are learning to read after that they're reading to learn. So it's a very crucial threshold. If kids are not reading to learn by the end of third grade, if they're not reading at the end of third grade, they are much more likely to have adult problems with chemical dependency, criminal justice, employment, so it's imperative. And we have risen to this challenge and are very excited about it. We have new Comprehensive Strategic Literacy Plan, and we've heard about it in great depth on Monday. And we're screening earlier, we're finding where kids have problems, we're providing interventions, we're doing metrics. Or it's, to me, it's something, it's a microcosm where I'd like to see the district going. We're seeing a lot of metrics, it's being very visibly produced for us, and we have specific steps, and we can nimble and act on our feet. So to me, it's a metaphor writ large for what we can be doing in our district.
For me, this breaks down into a short-term and a longer-term discussion in terms of what we should be looking at as the major issues. One kind of quick task list that I think is a big issue is we need a clear op-ram for the COVID restrictions. Just, we spent 90 minutes in our school board meeting this past week talking about testing in schools and whatnot. I attended four different introductories to do different schools throughout our community and outside of Edina Public Schools, and the C word they're talking about is curriculum. And I just think we need an op-ram for it. We can be nimble, but I think we need an op-ram. And the second thing that's facing us is the core curriculum outcomes. Also, in Monday's meeting, we heard that more students are performing below grade level based on the fast bridge assessment. And so we really need time to start focusing on that. We really need to roll up our sleeves and get into the learning and the academics part of this, and also support families and students, but really do our core mission work in education.
This question, the answering order is Owen, Nicole, and then Erica and Michael. Would you approve the develop of a program similar to Minnetoka Vantage Program at high school? I personally do not know what is the Vantage Program, so I just Google it, and I'm going to read this out. Vantage starts with a vigorous, multidisciplinary curriculum. Real-life project, expert guest instruction, one-to-one mentoring, and a site visit for, to create a unique, engaged experience. Vantage foster personal growth and professional skill that most young adults don't develop until well after college and early into their careers. So it's kind of a project-driven, real-life experience.
Thank you. I'm an enthusiastic proponent of Minnetoka's Vantage Program. They've just, I think they put a building in place over there, and it has been very successful. I think they've had it on the ground for 10 years now. And as I said earlier, I found out later in life that I'm good at, and I like programming, I like computers. I wish I had seen that earlier. And this kind of program, I think, exposes kids at an early age to vocations and sees if there's really a match, if there's a fit, if this would work for you. You know, it's kind of funny, I've got degrees, but I'm a tradesman. I'm a computer guy. And the trades right now need people, pipe fitters, plumbers, all sorts of these tasks. Kids can go into Dunwoody for two years and come out with very little debt and have a well-paying job. And Vantage is broader than that, but I think it is really pursuing the right thing. I'd be an enthusiastic advocate of considering that here in Edina.
I was just thinking about this, it kind of reminds me of, remember, when it was Bring Your Kid to Work Day, and that was going to be such a great idea, and then we brought our kids to work, and my kids were sorely disappointed that I didn't make the Cheerios, I just promoted them. So I think it's a really good idea to have Vantage program. And by that, I mean it's good for these kids to get out and to sample different projects. One of the biggest things I like about the Vantage program is the relationships it develops between the teacher and the learner. So that's what I really like about it, and then it's individual assessment. I bring my kids on college tours so they can be excited about what they're doing, not just in high school, but what they're doing high school for. But I love the idea of the Vantage program and personal, developing personal growth, professional skills, but also nurturing those relationships that are so important.
Thank you. There are elements of the Vantage program I love, and I think are really exciting. I think the internship, the experience with the companies, the project-based learning that I would love to adopt and be part of. There are parts of it that give me pause, and that is that test scores have shown that Vantage students don't do as well on their academic standards and their standardized tests because they are spending so much time on their project-based learning. And so I would like to figure out how we can take the best things from Vantage, which are those project-based learnings, but make sure the students are still getting the academic standard piece so there isn't a suppression in their AP tests and their ACT tests because that's very important. Because it's important that they're getting some of that work piece, but we can't have them being out of school so much that they're not getting that academic piece.
Like you, Dr. Humm, with that, I've never heard of it before you asked that question. Glad that other people have. Here's what I would say. I am a full proponent of any opportunity where we can bring together public and private partnerships in order to improve the development and learning for students in the community. While I'm not specific with the particulars that are there, I look at our personal and professional development of our students to make them adult-ready, if you will, when they graduate from high school, whether they move on to college or whether they move on to something else, is one of the core tenets of our public education system. I believe in Edina in particular, we have a wealth of businesses, business leaders, community leaders, who are very, very engaged in our private sector that could then have students in our school system who, if we could bring to the table, figure out what is the right program for Edina so that we can excel in this area. I'd be fully supportive of that, while at the same time making sure we don't take our eye off the ball of the core academics that we need to be able to. Thank you.
All right, the last question, that question will go to Michael first. I will read it very slowly. Can they, if any, can they, a question repeated, please ask. In the past, at the end of the school year, the administration reported to the school board the school improvement plan and status, including measurable goals and results. Would you request the superintendent to reinstate the reporting?
So the question indicates that that reporting is not done today, is that the implication?
Sounds like it did in the past. Sounds like it did in the past.
Here's what I would say. In anything that we do, in a strategic plan as robust as this, as the execution that the administration and superintendent is required to do, all stakeholders need to know the actions that we've taken, what happened? We need to have leadership and actions, but we need to understand the results. If we don't understand the results, does it really matter what we then did? The answer, of course, is no. So I'm a big believer that yes, we need to have results reported in a timely fashion, in an ongoing fashion, and making sure that it represents all the different stakeholders that care about that, including the community at large, not just parents and students. So yes, I would definitely support whether that's a specific report or not, but having ongoing, not just at the end of the year, but having on an ongoing basis to where the community understands where we are as we continue to progress. Thank you.
Erica?
So the state used to require a year-end report that would have to go to the state. So I'm wondering if that's what is being referred to? And what's the state doing? We stopped doing? We are working on a district report card right now that's going to have a lot of measures in it that I think will, probably won't be the exact same report, but will have measures of success. And it will show by school and that we can see year-over-year progress or things that we need to work on. Our superintendent and district and board are working on right now. You should be able to see an example of what it's going to be this spring because the plan is for the board, this is something that has been missing. And we need to have, hold ourselves accountable, and we need to give measures out to the community. So this spring, we will have an example of what we will be reporting. And then next year, the plan is to have the baseline data that we can start measuring against on a go-forward basis.
Nicole?
Yes, I'm in favor of reporting information back, accountability transparently. I really would love to see us have not just the strategic plan, but really what I think this speaks to is the more detailed plan and assessment of what's happened and then what's going to happen from here. It's great to have a five-year strategic plan, but you do need a focused document that's kind of a little bit closer to the playbook of what's going to happen in a year.
I like reports like this. We've got something coming out here in this fall. It's called the World's Best Workforce. It's a state-mandated report. It reports on things like literacy rates, grad rates, kindergarten rate. And I think that that gives the community a sense of where the district's going. I'm real big on metrics and knowing what your numbers are and squaring yourself to the reality, being truthful and looking yourself straight in the air and knowing and acknowledging we've got a weakness here. And to that end, I would love to up our game in terms of surveys, surveys of the students, of the parents, the teachers, start building a baseline and get launched to know that also year after year, we've got this rich data history of what students, what everyone's feeling. Beyond that, academic outcomes. We talk about MCA's quite a bit, that's state mandated, but the better tests are MAPS scores. And those are nationally norm. I would like to see those published on the website by school, by grade, by subject. So any kind of visibility into this data, I think is very useful.
Okay, thanks, everyone. So because of timing reasons, so we're going to wrap up the formal Q and A now. But before we go to the final closing statement, we actually do have one audience and want to have some comments, particularly regarding the earlier question about the Asian hate. So.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity. And first, just want to say thanks to all of you taking time this weekend to come to this forum. Really appreciate it. So I, my name's Yan Kim Chang. So I moved to Edina from Maple Grove eight years ago, so have been living there here for about eight years. And then, I mean, we love Edina. So personally, our family, we really haven't had any kind of income of Asian hate. But recently, just want to share, I wouldn't label it as Asian hate, but it's more like disturbing behavior from students. So basically, it's funny, like, you know, I really didn't know this until last night, and then I told my daughter. Basically, I have two kids. So one in the ninth grade in high school, another one in Norman Dale in fifth grade. So I told my old one, I'm coming to this forum, so do you have any questions I can bring up to the candidates? So and then she just mentioned recently, she attended the homecoming, right, and with another girl. So they both happened to be Asian. So then while they enjoy their time, so there's some kind of boys and then just saying some, you know, kind of the inappropriate word. So and then it's a bit kind of encounter over there, and then she's courageous enough. So she kind of tried to, you know, tell them that's not the right word to say. I think really no major impact so far, but I'm worried like long-term, right? And she's going to be in this school for four years. And then, I mean, if this happened like, you know, every day, I used to worry about the long-term impact. And then that mental impact, this comes to something, you know? Really, I mean, it's a great community, and then I'm sure of us enjoying here, Edina really, I mean, is a high standard, right? And then that's all the reason why we moved from different cities here. So this is just a small disturbing kind of behavior, but I just want to hear your thoughts, like, you know, I guess, you know, how we can basically, you know, just improve this. And I think little things add up and then, you know, going to have a long-term impact. Thank you.
So this is not, I would take it as not exactly the question, but yeah, feel free to leave questions or comments. And we're going to wrap up the Q and A.
Well, I was actually at the homecoming and I was in the stands and I was actually near all the middle schoolers who completely got out of here. I did not hear or see what happened. All I got was a wave of students who literally came over into my elementary group that we were in from that standpoint. So I did not hear or know the specifics of what happened with that. Here's what I would say, is that we need to try to find and work hard to understand the context of why things happen, not just what happened, but why it happened. I've heard everything from, kids were being in a public, social environment for the first time and they had freedom because there weren't parents around to boss them around or to control them or whatever it is, and they were letting their hair down. And when they do that, especially if you'll forgive me, teenage boys, because I have one, do a lot of stupid things. That's not an excuse, and that's not the sole reason, and that's not the sole context for any circumstance, but I think there's a component to that. Our kids have been locked up and at home and avoiding these types of social interactions. It's not surprising that they would then possibly struggle to then show up properly once they are then in that environment. So I think that's one element of that. Second, is that I fundamentally believe that people are both ignorant and indifferent to others. That's not a common theme. I think people want to see the best in people, but we've gotten to the point now in our society to where if it's not us, it's other. And we fear other or we're concerned with other and so forth. So to me, what we need to do about that is not only be able to provide guidance to what's appropriate social interaction, what's appropriate from that standpoint, and educate people as to what they're, what they're doing, what they're saying impacts others and have them own that. That's important. But what we also need to be able to do is as a modeling of society, how do we model to children, how we deal with disagreement, how we deal with just difficult topics, things of that nature, in order to then show them the right way? We should not assume that they're automatically getting that. I'm sorry if that, that experience happened with your child. I know that there was many children who had some difficulties at homecoming. My hope is that we can be better than that. Thank you.
I can answer that. First off, I'm sorry to hear that that happened and that that shouldn't happen. And who knows? It could have been, just as Michael said, just some middle school boy immaturity, of which there's quite a bit. And I was a middle school boy myself, and I know about middle school boy immaturity. I have three boys. So that doesn't excuse it, and boys have to learn. And one thing I have heard and seen is the district has pretty good procedures in place when they hear about this for bringing the child aside and saying, this is not acceptable behavior. So I'm pleased that we have those mechanisms in place. And I think one of the best ways to have this sort of activity go down is when the kids mix with each other, rub shoulders with each other, playing the band together, playing sports together, and they see their fellow humanity and other friends say, you can't say that. There's a peer pressure to not say things like that. So that's, that's what I would say.
So I have two recent, one recent grad, but two high school daughters. And I feel for you because I know those words can cut harder than sometimes my son would intend to do. So I acknowledge the gender differences at times, but I hear you and I feel for you. I think we really have to be honest about what we're doing here. We are spending so much time talking about individuals that we are forgetting the community that we live in. There's an effort called Hey Edina that was started in the high school. I think we need to really focus and challenge ourselves to come together as one community instead of continuing to talk about our differences. So that doesn't mean we negate them. We want to celebrate differences, but I think at the end of the day, we are all Edina.
Professional relationships between the Chinese committee, Edina, and also the school board. So I'm hoping that in the future, we can have this kind of forum every time there's a school board election. And with that, I would like to have each candidate to have a closing statement and maybe to one, one minute. And to answer, the order is. Okay. Erica, Owen, and Michael and Nicole. Please stop with Erica.
Well, I first just want to thank all of you for coming today to listen to me and the other candidates. I did want to, I mentioned a lot of data points today, so I did put together data packets for everybody with a lot of detailed data for MCA, ACT scores, and other data, if you would like to take them with you. I'd also love to talk to you about any of the training data in our school district after the event. The education of our children is one of the most important things we do as a society. So I take this role very seriously. I so fundamentally believe in supporting our students, teachers, staff, and public education system that is my true passion in life. I believe in Edina Public Schools, and I believe in our future. I believe in a commitment to the continued improvement of our district so we can continue to challenge and meet the needs of all of our Edina Public School students. Thank you so much for your time today.
The next, Owen.
We are leaning our ladder against the wrong wall here in Edina. Since about nineteen, or 2012, when we started the new strategic plan, we've been focusing a great deal in diversity, inclusion, and equity. And our efforts since then, our scores have gone down. Last year, Minnesota, Edina was a top school in the, excuse me, the report ranking was twenty fourteen. And coincidentally, that's when we started our diversity, inclusion, and equity movement. It's state-sponsored ideology. It has challenged the structure of how we present our classes. It provides for a reason to erode some of our advanced learning. In this very room, a number of years ago on an equity event, I heard a black woman say, our race relations will improve when we learn to live and work and play together. I've learned to live and work and play with my Asian friends for nine years, and I wish that we would be able to do that as a society and naturally interact with each other. Get back to focusing here in Edina about academic excellence, get a professional training, back to academic focus, get reinforced or gifted and talented. And you've heard my other points, and I guess my time is out.
Michael, you go next.
Thank you for the invitation to come today. I genuinely, I very much so appreciated everything we've done. The questions today were excellent. You know, as a candidate, you know, we've now done many, many forums, many different discussions, and you sometimes wonder, oh, I'm going to get the same questions again, and now I have to go through that. That was not the case today, so I just wanted to say thank you for your insightful questions and also exposing and engaging us on topics that we might not always hear from other parts of the community. That, to me, is diversity, inclusion, and equity. So thank you. For me, what you can expect from me as a board member for the Edina Public Schools is that I recognize my role as a governor of what the school district is. I understand what it means to be able to be in the room and handle the strategic plan, work with Dr. Stanley and her team, help her to be successful. I want to make her successful, but she also has to be accountable to the delivery of what we want. And ultimately, we need to be accountable to all of you. That the standards that we set, the priorities that we set, how we allocate our resources needs to be in the strength for executing for your students and our community to continue to drive us forward. Thank you.
This is a great community, and it is the reason why you came back here to raise our children. I hope that through all of this, you've heard my intense desire to hear from every single person and stakeholders. I think we need to diversify how we do our feedback loop. This is an engaged community and people want to be a part of it. And I fully support families being a part of their children's education. I fully support policies that are created not for individuals, but for a system to ensure excellence for each individual. I think we have to check our inherent biases and ask the question, not only who benefits from the policies this board makes, but who could unintentionally be harmed by it? What can we do to mitigate that risk and maximize the benefit? So I just ask for your vote more than anything, to just get out and vote, to encourage your friends and neighbors to vote. This is important, this is an engaged community, and we win when we're all together, working together for the benefit of our schools. Thank you.
Before I would finally close this forum, I'd like to invite our lovely, respectful other mayors and his beautiful wife here today with us. If you can come to the stage and have some talk with us. Let's invite our mayor.
Well, that's unexpected. I got an email from Melanie yesterday, I think it was the day before that you were having a forum. It's the first chance I've had to sit down at a candidate forum, but I can tell everybody in this room that the years I've been involved in public service, Edina works kind of like a three-legged stool. It's the city, it's the school district, and the business community all working together to make Edina the success that it is. And so when you get the chance, like I did this morning, to come and see most of the candidates, it was, and I was disappointed the other two weren't here. I thought they all did an excellent job. You've got distinct points of view from all of the candidates. It gives you an opportunity to think about who you would support. But I think you can see that there are people that are really passionate about the city of Edina and the school district and have their individual notions about how to make it run as effectively in the future as it has in the past. It's a wonderful city. The school district, to me, the school district and our location are kind of the linchpin of all of our success. The quality of our school district drives everything else. I was at a meeting at Edina Realty the other day and spoke to them about some of the land use issues that are going on in Edina. Edina Realty is going to sell almost a billion dollars' worth of property in Edina in 2021. It tells you that people want to be here, they want to be here for the right reason. There was some expression about students leaving, and there were reasons, I think, a little bit of supposition about why they might be leaving. Everything's anecdotal. I've heard those same stories. But when I talk to mayors in the West Suburban area, there's this general discontent amongst population. And I know that at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, we had a pollster there do some work, and seventy-five percent during the, during the part of the pandemic, seventy-five percent of the parents in the United States that were surveyed would move their child to a different district if they had the opportunity. So there was a lot of unrest about how kids were being educated. And I think we need to just let the whole thing kind of settle down and pay attention to what's ahead of us immediately here. Continue to do, strive for excellence like we always have done in Edina, and there are different ways to get there. Folks have different approaches to that. But I'm really grateful that all of you want to run for the, for the school board or run again because it's been a difficult, I think, you know, we had a difficult two years at the city council, but for you, my heart really goes out to those of you that have been on the school board. I think you've had as much stress or more stress than we've had to deal with, with COVID and civil unrest. Later on, to your responsibilities, our most treasured asset, which is our kids. Kids are king in Edina. Kids are number one in Edina. Everybody cares about kids first. And so the work is really difficult, and I thank you all for the work that you have done, and thanks for wanting to run for the school board. It's good to be with you all this morning. Melanie, thank you.
It has been a great pleasure working with Edina Chinese Association for this morning's public forum. And United States is our hometown, so we always tell our parents, our children, that serving our community as much as possible, as much as we could. But everybody has their own priority. You have your family, your health, your career. There's a lot of things we need to worry about or carry about. In community service, a lot of times it's not on our priority list. For that, I really appreciate this morning, all of you sitting here with our mayor and his wife here. For that, I really appreciate this morning, all of you sitting here and with our mayor and his wife here. You put our community service on your top list and not only for today. I think of six of you running for the candidates, running for these elections. You put community service as your priority and we see it, we know it, we stand for it. On behalf of Minnesota International Chinese School and Edina Chinese Association, we appreciate your hard work, your efforts and your sacrifice. And we will serve you as much as we could in the years to come as well. So you can come on us and we will come on you to build a better and stronger community. And we wish you all the best for your family, for your health and for your career and for your election. Thank you so much being with us today. And you're welcome to stay and talk to maybe anybody have future questions for the questions you want to stay here. You're welcome. Let's take a good photo so to remember today. So if I can have the mayor couple, you can, you both can just sit there. No, and if mayor and you can stand in the middle. And audience, if we can just behind and we'll take a good photo together today. Thank you.